Stand to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Give me a poll.
Good. I will do a roll call. Moore?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Keliczek is absent, excused. SWAC, Eric Hawkins, late. For the record, Clerk Lori Zelenok is in attendance. Judy Vurse is absent, excused.
Okay, we'll move on to the minutes of the August 11 meeting. Motion to approve the minutes.
Let's make a call to approve the minutes of the August 11 meeting.
I will second that motion.
All in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Hearing done. Motion carries. Go on to the agenda approval for this evening.
No changes?
No changes, although we were making them last minute upstairs.
That's fine. They're officially here. So I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Hearing done. Motion carries. We're going to not do treasurer's report and accounts payable at this point in time.
Table votes.
We're table it until later. So we're going to go right on to new business.
Public comment.
I'm sorry. Is there any public comment at this point? Yes, Dave.
Could you stand up and say your name, please?
I'm Dave Rappert, and I've been here a long time, I think the 70s. Something just hit me the other day. It's been 20 years since the SLU team came to town and they called it terrorizing us. I think they're trying to help us solve our sewage problem.
Who? Dave, excuse me, who?
The health, Oakland County Health Department. They tested their tenant catch spaces. A lot of them had sewage in them. Mine, my in the corner building, had at least at 741 whatever. Sam's house had 1,250,000. They came back and tested two different times, one in the RBC. They gave us a warning, but we're not listening.
Are you saying this just happened recently?
What happened recently?
That they did this? This isn't recent, is it?
When did they come and do the testing? Did you mention when they did those tests?
Yeah. Oh, 20 years ago, so that would be in 2006. At least mine was done on January 28, 2005. They did five in 2005 and 2006. They were around for a while. You wouldn't see them, but they're there. They're back doing something a little bit different now. Those two houses right at Baysland Rochester Road, they are being forced to put raised septic. That's, I haven't got that confirmed by the Health Department yet, but I'm pretty sure that's what's going on. Whenever you sell a house now, if you don't meet the requirements.
Are you talking on the west side of Forest Street?
Yes.
The guy's house burned down?
Yeah.
Yes.
There's two of them.
Yes, I know I approved both those tickets for that.
Yeah, they're putting them in.
Yes.
Well, that's good, but here's another problem that we didn't solve. On this side, the post offices. You know what kind of trouble we have down there. Trying to get it to work itself out. There's no hope for those houses unless we can solve them. And my solution is for this side of the street and that side of the street, get rid of the alleys. You don't need them. This one is a non-functioning legal alley. It isn't, but you got permission. That one barely is because you can go through it, but that property was taken from the people on this side, including the post office. So I think we should give it back to them and let them put some septic in. I know that they're saying that the post office would not be there. They searched hard and they found some. But on the other side, everybody has sand. It's all raised up and they put raised septic in to survive. You can't survive on this side. It's just not going to happen. I'm afraid they're going to come in. They gave us 20 years. We've done nothing. They're going to come in and start condemning.
Well, we did do a sewer study. We spent $60,000 on it. We brought it to the public to have them vote on it.
Yes, we did.
And it was voted down.
Yeah. Well, I'm coming up with another solution.
Okay.
And that is, let's give the alley back to those people so they can expand their septic. We're not, we don't need that alley for anything. There's no purpose for it. And the same one here. I'm not even going to get into what went on because it's, it's just.
So Dave, I just want to stop you there. As per Robert's Rule of Order, when you are doing public comment, you get three minutes to make public comment. Your three minutes have passed. If you want to be put on next month's agenda, you can bring all of this forward to someone at the office, to myself or to Judy.
Well, in three minutes or whatever?
You've gone over your, you've passed your three minutes for public comment.
And you can't give me anymore.
I cannot give you anymore. Um, I have Robert's Rule of Order upstairs if you want me to pull it, but just as a courtesy to all of our guests and all of our audience members, it's just fair to everyone that if you, if this is going to become a protracted presentation, that I would appreciate it if you could maybe present this to the planning commission or, you know, put something in some kind of a cogent printed form where we could have more information for the trustees to study it and look at it, and then bring it to the next meeting.
Okay, put it on the agenda.
Okay, you got it.
For next meeting?
Well, if you're on the agenda, you get more than three minutes because then you would be a line item on new business.
But it's, it's something that should be addressed.
Okay.
If we don't do it, we're going to lose it. I go for one minute.
Okay, very good. Appreciate it.
It's not like we're going to ignore it.
Okay, thank you.
That was going on this agenda or the planning commission?
So that will go on October's agenda.
This agenda, okay.
Yeah.
Is there any other public comment at this point in time? Hearing none. Let's move on to the mill presentation. With us tonight is Brandon Still, who is the entrepreneur in this venture, and Tim Colvin from Oakland County. Ron Campbell couldn't be here this evening, so Tim works with him. Let me put my glasses on so I can read what I'm saying. So if you would like to address us, if there's, you weren't here for that mill presentation. We don't need to go into it real deep. Most of us know. I'm sorry, a couple of people are missing tonight, but so far, but. What Brandon does is get these small entrepreneurs together who want these small venue places to sell their wires. And he gets that. He's done this with other communities, with other mills and barns or buildings or some old historic building and proved that it was a viable thing for the community to have. With that comes a lot of help in getting grants and funding going forward. So what we're looking at is kind of a pilot program here for the mill. We can't use the inside of the building because Tim Hollis is supposed to walk through it with me. He hasn't done it yet. Plus, we need a structural engineer. And the one he was going to put me in touch with is now gone, so unfortunately. So I'll be looking for a structural engineer. That's going to cost us a little bit of coin. But there is a little grant, bit of grant money out there that I have to apply for before the 30th of this month. So if you would, Brandon, if you would like to talk a little bit about what we were discussing earlier this last month.
Take care of it, see you, I guess. I don't know if I meant the cameras. That's all right. So very quickly, it wasn't clear. My name is Brandon Still. I live over in Fireston. Moved there about 10 years ago. We have two little kids, a third one on the way. And in 2018, I launched my first coworking space. If you're not familiar with coworking, basically shared space for small business owners, entrepreneurs. People who could work at home, but because of kids and dogs and dishes and what have you, they don't want to. For four years after that, I owned and operated six coworking spaces, all in small towns, all in a variety of historic structures. At that point, I realized I was not good at managing six of these places. I go for well over 100 people who all needed attention. So I started consulting on coworking spaces instead of working with nonprofits, communities, chambers of farmers, mainstream programs to launch small town coworking. And I saw a need for a new version of it, which instead of just catering to people working on their laptops, we wanted to work with aspiring brick and mortar businesses. People like coffee bean roasters, bakers, health and wellness people. You see people who are making sourdough bread at home, but where do they sell it? And you have farmers markets and makers markets. So this is kind of an extender. It's a place that aspiring brick and mortar business owners and entrepreneurs can come, test out their business model in a physical structure. And the idea is that everybody works together. They lift each other up. You have shared audiences. You have shared marketing. You have shared expenses with the space. And I like to call them people-based businesses. So this isn't manufacturing. This isn't industrial. This is people who are working face to face with their customers and with the community. And if it becomes a third place, it becomes a gathering place. If it becomes a place of music and art and events, all working together, not only to improve the entrepreneurial ecosystem for the people in that building, but the effects really go well beyond, hopefully into the business district, into the residential district, lifting up hopefully the entire community. And what we're proposing, I think, here is pretty unique in that it's really a three-part partnership. We're not proposing that we would take ownership of the building, would remain with the city. And there's a lot of advantages to that because it keeps us eligible for certain grants, which the county can help us, so, you know, the third part of the partnership here. And then what I've been told in talks with Ron and my experience with other places is that, you know, people will put in the work for these grants. They'll apply and then they'll be told, well, we don't see the demand. We don't see the need. So that's where I come in, is demonstrating from the ground up that we can drive meaningful business and attendance and use of this building and just kind of keep growing around and growing together. Let's do a real quick kind of version and kind of contribute there.
Sure. And so obviously, I work with Ron Campbell. He's an architect. I am not, but. I work, you know, we all work in economic development at the county, and I'm representative of Main Street Local County. And we've in the past offered up or have provided a list of assistance for the build, for the preservation of the mill, which is a significant and, you know, historic asset here. We recognize the heritage of it. We think that there's potential, obviously, as we've seen in other communities, for the renovation and reuse of the space. We think this is a good opportunity that Brandon's offering up right now in that it would be a local cost entry into showing, you know, a demonstration of use for the space so that it's not going to continue to sit with 100 illegal bodies. And over time, it would, you can build through the use to expand, you know, the repairs and the amenities and the things that would be needed. I know Ron was integral in helping you with having the roof secured and some other work done. And there are opportunities for grants for historic preservation projects such as that. And just as being a member of Main Street Local County, which you are, you're one of our partner local communities. Yes. That we have money that we set aside for all of our communities every year to take on various projects. It's very open-ended in how to use, but you have $1,500 that we would be able to, you know, this is just given as part of our service. So I know that's not a lot, but that could help with preparing the space and, you know, doing something along those lines. All of that being said, Oakland County's here to assist. We will continue to assist, both architecturally and with the, you know, the economic part of it. We see the value of the continued, you know, restoration and use of the mill. And hopefully, this is an opportunity that will spur further development.
Is it possible that Oakland County could guide us to somebody who could look at the structure? I spoke with our building inspector and, you know, he's accustomed to modern code and modern buildings. And he just said, you know, a lot of the way that that's built, he didn't feel completely comfortable being able to give us a COA on that. And so what I'm wondering is if you guys might know somebody that could guide us into helping inspect that building?
Yeah, Ron Campbell will have those resources. I can talk to him.
Okay, I can.
I know that we have, we have a list of, you know, various contractors that we recommend. And a structural engineer, it sounds like, would be what we need in this case. We definitely could refer one to you.
Great. I can, I can speak with Ron this week, too.
Mr. Green? Any questions?
As a landlord, I would ask the question of who manages the building once it's up and running?
Yeah, so a couple of things. One, I would definitely have insurance for me and then anybody who operates under me would be insured as well. You retain the ownership of the building, but, and we didn't really dive into a lot of, you know, that's the grass.
Yeah, I was going to say, in your current buildings, or the current buildings that you've either consulted on or sold, you know, and so, who manages those? Because it's such a collective. Is it the city that does it or?
So I think most of the aesthetic sort of things, so like cutting the grass, managing, you know, the look of the building, that sort of thing would fall on me at that point. Whereas, you know, the kind of general maintenance, structural repairs, that sort of thing, that'd be the city responsibility, but with that being said, kind of, this is meant to be really a partnership.
And who handles the rental side of it? I'm assuming it's a rented space that maybe weekly, monthly, daily?
And yeah, so that's my business model.
Oh, okay.
So managing, you know, the software tools, the calendar, and really what I, I didn't know this was, how this business was going to evolve, but managing that calendar and coordinating those is really a big part of it. You know, if you have somebody who wants to do coffee, you partner them with maybe yoga class and sourdough bread and then maybe there's kids events. So then, you know, building all these connections between the right people to make it so it's a space where, you know, if you come for one thing, all of a sudden you're exposed to three other businesses you would have never met before. And so my role is recruiting those businesses, kind of selling them on, you know, coming to the space, renting it, and then helping them. It's kind of like all ships on a rising tide sort of thing. It's meant all work together a little bit.
So I guess one of the points that we did discuss, too, because right now we don't have occupancy of the mill. The permanent events that you would be sitting and do it, like outdoor events in the immediate, until we can figure out what needs to happen to get indoor accessibility.
I guess I was hoping, I mean, that the roof had gone on before, that the structure was checked before. I thought that was kind of a given, but.
Nobody has told me that.
I guess I should, I guess I'm wrong. Okay. I guess the assumption was wrong.
I've been into the space. I'm not disillusioned as to where we're starting.
Yeah.
But, you know, I think it's one of those things that without a reason to start diving into it, why would somebody dive into it? Yeah, so we'll, we'll start with outdoor events, you know, and show the demand, show that people will attend and hopefully give a reason. And with county support, hopefully we can come up with creative ways to, you know, hire the right people to check it out and all that together.
We at least did get power there, so that's a good thing.
I know I discussed this with Ron, so he was giving me the, you know, the lowdown. And I think the biggest hurdle is going to be the bathrooms. And so it would probably be some sort of scenario where there would be temporary, you know, quarantine type use until there could be the, what you can have the occupancy of the space. And that'd probably be one clearly since you didn't want to do this.
We, excuse me, we do have one toilet we can use back in the parking lot by the trail. We do have use of that.
Right, Jaycee's the job. Depending on how many people come, you may be too.
Sure, sure. But we can use that for parking also back there. So we need to get that. And we have a lack of water. We don't have a well for the mill. So we're looking at probably going to have to have some kind of washstand, you know, longways to put on the sidewalk when we have our strawberry festival and stuff like that, so.
Do they have, do they have water?
They probably just had sanitized, oh, back in the day.
I don't know, but I asked about a well. They said we don't have one. But we do have water in the garage. We do have a well at the garage. So although that doesn't help us out, you know, it would take us piping over to the mill to put water at the mill.
Right.
That would be a bit of an expense right now, so.
Well, you'd also have to, you'd be passed on the Polyan Trail, it looks like, too, so.
Oh, yeah.
You'd have to have permission.
DNR would have to approve all of this.
Yeah, they have permission.
Go an inch under the, out there to boot, so. There's a lot of work to be done in that area. But to get by for this pilot program, to see if this is viable, we could, we will probably.
Make two.
Something.
Yeah, make two.
I'm confused. That guy worked in there all day.
It probably, it probably does, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't assume that it weren't dirt was good.
I don't know. I asked about it and nobody seems to know.
More than likely, it was inside. It's probably inside. It's probably a well point underneath the floor somewhere.
Let me say that. It'd be nice if you could just repair that and get it going.
As possible.
I don't know. I really like the idea, though. Get that thing to use.
Yeah.
I don't want it ripped down.
This is probably the best idea we've come up with, actually, to any kind of hope for restoring that mill.
And I always ask the question, the Polyan Committee is okay with this?
I've told them everything about this. They know everything that's going on. We're kind of in concert with them. I always talk to them almost every day, anyway.
I ask that to be nice, but I know that they would like to see something happen. They don't, you know, the vision was there, but if it changes, visions change, so I'm sure they would be thrilled to see anything.
Linda would like that.
Yeah.
Especially if they're serving some kind of liquid drink.
Okay.
Not alcohol.
Actually, it was part of a board meeting, and the board meeting went over there. We are, we were investigating the mill as part of the trail also. It's, we'll be working in concert with them on this.
Cool.
Yeah, they'd be very happy to see some activity there. Nobody else has that right now.
Uh, no, uh, no.
So Brandon also does concerts, small venue concerts and stuff in the summer. Nobody has.
We actually had one, and it was pretty successful, considering. It was one, but I still have stickers on stuff from it, so. It's cool. It's very cool. Yeah.
Seriously.
Well.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody here. The group I heard in the county has connected.
I appreciate it.
It looks like, oh, okay.
I'd like to make a wish to the village owner to speak forward to this opportunity.
Absolutely.
Give it to the U.S. Senate.
100% second.
Thank you.
Well, guys have your answer. We're going to move forward with this. Tomorrow morning, we'll get ahold of our insurance company and see what we have to do on our side with that. And then I'll, I'll, yes?
Did we get an offer on that?
No.
Okay.
I haven't done that. I haven't gone there yet.
Oh, okay.
Okay. We're going to do a roll call because there's.
We should do a roll call.
Doesn't hurt.
Okay, so we have a motion by Kennedy for the Village of Leonard to proceed forward with the opportunity, seconded by SWAC. So I'll do a roll call on that, okay? Uh, let's see here. Moore?
Yes.
SWAC?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Thank you. So we will proceed and get this going as soon as possible.
What would you like my next step?
What do we need it to be?
What we haven't really done in paperwork, which is probably for me, but I assume we probably need some. And then insurance, I know we talked about that a little bit. We'll have to figure out exactly what you guys need on your side, and then we'll fill that in, kind of, probably needs.
Um, you know, I'm going to reach out to Michigan Municipal League first, just because they do a lot of legal stuff. They're generally, like, I don't, I think we don't need him at this point.
We'd want him rewriting the.
Right, so, you know, I just, yeah, we'll give them a call and then we can just be in touch. We can just kind of communicate and as I hear from them and see what they're asking, I'll just pass it on to you and we'll just keep moving the ball forward with them.
We've got people who are ready to do events and.
Hey, sweet. Summer's not done.
Not probably, no.
And the county's fiscal year starts, the new fiscal year starts October 1st. And so at that point, we would have the funds available. Like I said, I mentioned where there was $1,500. We actually are, currently have some, but it seems unlikely that we would be able to process it before October.
I think he knew I was going to ask, so can I get it twice?
But just other than immediately on October 1st, you're eligible and you would be able to request that. We'll have it on online form, maybe fill out. It's very simple, but again, we'll, you know, we'll provide information to you.
Cool, great. Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Brandon.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
If you want to stick around for the rest of this boring meeting, okay.
Yeah, there's a lot on the agenda. Escape while you can. Go!
Yeah, it's okay.
That's a great part of meeting, actually. Very nice.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Take care. Appreciate the time, guys. All right, take care. Bye-bye. Thanks.
Okay.
Okay, so we are, we are going to circle back.
We're going to circle back to accounts payable.
Treasurer's report.
I'm sorry, treasurer's report.
There you go. We'll keep you honest today. It's all good. It's all good. All right, treasurer's report, treasurer's report. So I know Judy, and Judy is, this is Judy's last treasurer's report.
It is, it is.
I will make a motion to approve Judy's last treasurer's report for the Village of Leonard, August 2025. Please pay the bills.
I'll support.
Oh, that's, that's not pay the bills, okay.
Okay, I'll do a roll call.
Yeah.
SWAC?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
On to accounts payable.
I'd like to make a call to pay the bill in $2,786.82 in general, $136.06 from Baker, $48 for local, and $1,699.15 from the park.
Ooh, support.
Roll call, please.
Okay. Hawkins?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
SWAC?
Yes.
That, that, too, wanted to.
I was going to say.
That is a CD?
Yes.
We approved for treasurer's.
That's the only reason I said yes, otherwise I was like, hold on a second, that number's safe.
We switched the money from Oxford to.
She said to keep it safe.
To get a better deal.
Yeah, to keep it safe.
Well, actually, I'm going to have him work on that letterhead. Sorry for interrupting. Go ahead.
Where did that one come from?
My son made it.
Nice.
So, um.
That looked pretty good in the way it is.
So, um, this is, can, can, do you mind if I jump in?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I don't want to, I don't want to steal your thunder, but, um, he really wanted to be here tonight to present on it, but unfortunately, um, he's in class right now. So I think he's in class. Who knows where he is. Anyway, so, um, what he came up with, and if you don't care for it, let me know. He can make changes. He just did it in one of his little programs. So the, this is old Roland Hall, when it used to have the little tower on top. Um, the colors, green and blue, are because the state of Michigan flag is green and blue. And whenever you do a state seal, you're supposed to mirror the state colors on the flag with your seal. The number of stars that are around Roland Hall is that, um, are we the 17th state? I'm going to be terrible because I don't remember. But however many stars we are, that's the, the state that we wear when we made statehood.
1837.
Okay. And then, um, the little squiggly doo that looks like something that you would see in a medical thing, it's actually, um, Hermes is the god of commerce and, um, travel. And when Leonard was officially established all those years ago, we were a major center of commerce and travel because the, you can just look at mine if you want. So, um, yeah, here, I'm going to tear it off my thing because I have it around. So, um, that's why I put there. And then two little strawberry blossoms on the side.
Nice. Did he come up with all these, like?
He, he did research.
Did he research all this stuff?
He did. So I also want a letterhead. So I'm actually going to ask him to do a letterhead because, you know, um, but I do notice that all municipalities have this. I think that, um, Addison Township, I think it's like rural charm or something like that. And so anyway, yeah. So if you guys like it, you guys can vote it in and we'll make it official and I'll put it in all our documents.
Be cool.
And if you want to make changes, let me know and let me changes.
I can't argue any changes because they all make sense. Everything.
Okay.
Like makes sense. Right. I really want to know.
I think that we are going to need a motion for them to adopt it in a roll call.
Yes.
I will make a motion to adopt the seal as presented.
Or. Number roll call vote, please.
Sure, just one second. That was, Hawkins is the second.
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
SWAC?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Okay. Next, I'm going to do three and four together. Okay?
You absolutely, this is your meeting. I know that I interrupt you constantly, but it's your meeting.
We're together working for this village too long, too many hours. We're getting used to one another. So, but there's two resolutions on board. One is for Don for his 27 years of service to the village and the other one is for Judy for her 28 years.
29.
Twenty-nine years now?
Holy smokes.
Of service to the village.
Do you want anybody to read these?
Do you want me to read?
Do you guys need to? Basically, the resolution recognizes Don Irwin for 27 years of dedicated service to the Village of Leonard. Honorably diligently served the village, faithfully expertly performed his duties, leadership, hard work, dedication, instrumental in maintaining and approving the vital infrastructure and public services. Wish to express its prof, we wish to express our profound gratitude and appreciation for his exceptional service. Um, da, 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 da. And the same for Judy. Faithfully served the village for 29 years. Uh, gone above and beyond responsibilities of treasurer by also managing administrative duties, ensuring continuity, transparency, effective functioning of village operations. Um, managing the building department, providing oversight, essential planning for the permitting, zoning. She's basically run the village in its own way. Um, deep knowledge, tireless commitment. Uh, we, Judy has earned the respect and gratitude of village members, staff, residents, and colleagues through her many years. That's the gist of both of those. Do you need a motion?
Yes.
Yes. Motion may we approve both of these resolutions for.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolutions to recognize both Don Irwin and Judy Burris.
Got it.
And I need a roll call on that, actually, because it's a resolution. So we, we do them. Yep.
Roll call, please.
Mm-hmm. Moore?
Yes.
SWAC?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Okay. This brings us down to, uh, number five. It's our new auditor search. Okay, this is, uh, when Lori and I had our meeting, well, Judy and Lori and I had our meeting with State Treasury on the 28th of last month. Uh, we got dinked pretty hard on our audits. Uh, there was questions regarding, it, it isn't so much that we're late on an audit as that we're almost always late for years on auditing and they did not understand why. And right now, it's locked up a lot of funding. It, it, a substantial amount of money is being held back from us, which could go into engineering for our, our large paving project could help us pay for that. That's the first one I had come up that said you could use it for engineering. So we really need to get this unlocked. Our auditor was on an extended sick leave and we couldn't get ahold of him. We couldn't get ahold of anybody. We tried and finally I started going over there and just see when the door was open and asking anybody in that, in that professional building. And you're seeing the activity and I heard there's no activity or rarely. Uh, somebody did open the door for deliveries from UPS or something and that's all they saw. But there's generally nobody there. So, but I did have a reason to be in, in Oxford a little day and I did stop in and he was open. He was back at work. He is not a well man. I tell you, he had a hard time speaking with me. He's, you know, it's, uh, and I talked to Judy about that. She knew he wasn't well either. It's becoming a liability for us because it's hurting us with the state and the, you know, other people are late too with, with our audits and time. But it's not an always thing. With us, it's an almost an always thing. We've got to do something so. I started looking around and I went to, uh, at the, went on the NOTA board last, uh, January, March, somewhere in there. We, we approved a new auditor for NOTA. And that auditor was already serving Addison Township. So like their Addison Township turns, they are, they're much bigger than us. They turn around their audit in two weeks.
How, we've been waiting, what, a year, two years?
This one's almost a year.
And what did he say to you when you asked him if the best case scenario, he was like, uh?
When I, when I, you know, he was giving me a lot of program numbers and what he's going to do and it, and he could have told me anything. I didn't know anything about it anyway. You know, so if he's going to sandbag me, he can do it. I, I wouldn't know. But he told me he had 120 hours left of, of budget time. He figured to work into, that takes us into October sometime.
If he's working 40 hours.
I was going to say, if he's doing 40 hours.
But I don't think he's working 40 hours a week.
He said, oh, I'm going on vacation until the end of August. I just came back from sick leave.
It's really not fair to us to hold on to that. That's too much.
No.
It's not.
The question I would have too is that 120 hours left for us on the budget, is that the amount of work required left? Or is that what he has on the books left? And then also, does he have other clients lined up ahead of us that we are going to get gapped?
He told me, he promised me that he would make us priority when he came back from vacation, which was at the end of August. And I haven't talked to him since. I'm going to wait for Judy.
Understood.
That Judy knows, Judy has known him for 28 years. So I asked her to call, you know, to find out how much money we owe him at this point. What we're doing is preparing to take those files out and get a new auditor. Doesn't mean we're going to do it.
Well, I, we, I 100% support that because I don't feel like he's really taking this very seriously.
And, and the fear is, what if he's sick again? What, I mean, he's not well.
Well.
So, you know, I, he had, he had trouble. He couldn't hardly breathe talking to me. So I don't almost, I didn't approach the question. I don't do that with people, but, you know, I just, I looked at him. He's, he's not a well person. So I don't expect him to be in business much longer anyway. So we, even if we don't do it all this, which I don't want to do, but we should be prepared to do that so that it doesn't get locked up again and, and we expend more time on this than necessary. So that is where we're at.
So 120 hours takes us into Aga, or October, I mean.
When I talked to him, it is, yeah. So I figured.
That's three 40-hour weeks.
Yeah. They're 40-hour weeks. Yeah. I would assume. Hopefully he works 40 hours on it. If he doesn't, it could take us to Christmas.
I mean, being that we've been waiting a year, quite honestly, I would give him a week. If I don't see 40 hours, I pull.
My thought was before he starts some, because he's closed the books on 2023. So he does two years at a time.
Yes.
So he made his way through 2023. He had not started 2024. And my thought was, before he starts them, let's yank them.
Yeah.
And get them to somebody because about $71,000 is being held up in Act 51 money right now. And that's money that we could be using towards engineering of the road. So instead, we're leveraging other money to make that work. And we really don't want to do that.
No, and it's, like I said, it's not fair to us to be doing this.
And, and we planned it. We projected it out. We budgeted it. And the problem is, you know, the money we budgeted, we don't have right now. So.
And how long is it going to take to get the money after the audit's done? It's not going to be instant.
I don't know. I know we're on the naughty list, though.
You're talking about the funds that are locked up.
Yeah, let's say he finished right now. How long does it take? It could take months before that comes through.
I don't have a.
Don't know. I didn't think to ask that when we talked to those people from Treasury. So I don't know.
But that was, uh.
I mean, I, I, I don't ever want to pull business. However, I don't feel properly supported.
There, there are municipalities that change auditors almost every year.
I don't necessarily need to change orders all the time, but at the same time, I don't feel supported. I don't feel respected.
It's not like it has.
Reliability.
Right.
Reliability because we have such a small budget and we don't get a budget when we expect for.
Yeah.
Right, right. We need it. Yeah.
So I think coming up with a plan to find a new auditor is perfectly within the realm of.
I, like, to me, it's by next meeting.
Absolutely.
Either he's halfway done or we got somebody new in line. You know, like I said, I'm giving him a week.
So we'll continue to prepare.
I would definitely prepare.
Pull those files.
Yes.
Which will mean I'll have to get a cost from him of what the work he's done now.
And then, and then when we're done with our second audit, we'll let you know. Okay.
I guess the only.
On payment.
Two before.
Do not pay that fast.
Whoever we look at as the next auditor, do they have availability to get our files completed in the correct timeline?
Yes.
Well.
If we pull on, and then we wait six months.
State's finess the CPAs to go through. But we, but the one here, uh, and the reason, the reason NOTA board went to this company is they were less expensive than what we were using. And that's also part of the reason why Addison Township went to them because they were less expensive than the people they had previously.
So then I guess that would be our question is cost, of course, but timing.
Because the, the recommendations they gave us were like Deloitte and Touche. You know what I mean? They're like, they're huge.
They're huge.
Like, I don't see us bringing our work to Deloitte. I feel like if we could do this person, um, that, you know, two organizations say, she is really solid, works fast, gets it done, gets it done right, as opposed to us taking it to one of the largest accounting firms in Metro Detroit. So, um, I, I mean, I, you know, you guys are the ones that get to decide if you want to authorize Bill to go ahead and pursue this. But I feel like, you know, he's making a great judgment call right now, you know, reaching out to her and.
I, yes, I did, I did get the information from Addison Township. And, and I did, uh, email out to that company this, this morning and got a, uh, return email from, her name is Raina, R-A-N-A-M-Mons, E-M-M-O-N-S. She's the audit partner and managing director at PSLZ CPAs. And, uh, after she gave me her phone number and asked me to call her after she emailed me back this afternoon. So I had a nice talk with her before I came down this evening. I think you'd like her. She's, she's really a, a great gal. She, she does small municipalities as well as larger ones.
Nice.
They, they don't, and they said, well, I, she said, I go down to like 300 people. I says, well, we're a little bit bigger than that, 380 or so.
I was going to say, 250.
She says, great. I love working with small communities. She, she'd be helpful with us going forward. Any advice you can give? You know, we're going to need advice because when Judy's gone, we're, we now have to add the paper for a new treasurer again. And, and that person's not going to come in and just fly, you know, like, like she's been here forever, like Judy was. So she's going to need a lot of help. She or he or whoever.
Well, it's also nice to have a company that has a backup. So if there is somebody that leaves on maternity, sick, vacation, car accident, whatever the case may be, somebody else backs them up.
She said she would come out here personally and, and work with us.
Get the thing going. So we got some coffee for her when she gets here.
You know, so.
[laughing]
I, I think, you know.
Like I said, I, I.
That's listed from the state, but, but this is somebody, you know, and she knows the state. I told her about our state meeting. It was the most driving part of this.
She's in. Like, I'm sold.
I know, right?
I, I don't really, yeah. You're not going to sell me on anything besides get the job done. So as long as she has time and we're not waiting six months.
I asked her if they were taking on a new client. She said, absolutely.
There you go.
So she said it didn't seem to be a problem for her.
Good.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to proceed, or I'd like to make a motion to allow President Moore to proceed with a search for a new auditor and potentially reach out to this company.
I second. You're not going to get a fight from us.
All right. SWAC?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Okay. I might be a no vote on paying that bill, though, when it comes up. I'm just saying.
I know.
I might be too.
All right.
Okay. Park sign. You, I don't think you have the graphics. I have the graphics, but I don't think we made graphics.
I didn't.
We don't.
Okay.
I just gave you the bill. But if you want to see the picture, he has the picture to pass around.
Our park sign is delaminating with a nature park. And we look at it, we're looking at a, a new composite material sign that will weather better. And we had two options. One is a composite material which, when they print over the top of it. And I said, I didn't like that because it wouldn't, it's still going to weather and we're still going to have to freshen it up or do something with it. So I wanted one that would stay out and weather year round and we didn't have to worry about it.
Mm-hmm.
So we came up with this raised letter sign. It's a little more expensive, but it's a double-sided sign, but the, but the die goes all the way through the lettering. So the fading will, it'll weather better over time. So I've got, so this is a, run that out. Take a look at that. Now, now, those, both of those copies are in red.
How big is that thing?
Huh?
How big is that thing?
It looks huge. Let's see.
Good lord.
Well, it's hanging on the existing thing, right?
A couple feet by a couple feet.
About the same size as the one that's out there? About the same size as the one that's out there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So what we did, though, the best of colors are red and and but got away from strawberry colors going into nature park is green, so we went with a green. This is the green sign. That's the one that they're approving.
Okay.
That the park committee approved.
Okay.
We thought, we liked that one.
It does, the people in the picture makes it look cute. They're far away.
I'm curious of what that cost.
What does it cost? One thousand, six hundred, thirty three dollars and fifty eight cents. So we got to make a proposal.
One thousand, six hundred what? Sixteen, thirty three, fifty eight.
Although, we should be tax exempt, so we should be able to not forty one salary out for that.
Oh, right. And we're going to hang it ourselves. So that, they this little money there, they don't have to come out and put it up, we're just going to go get the sign and we'll put it up.
Oh, that's the late, uh.
I'd like to make the motion down to exceed sixteen hundred dollars for the replacement of the Leonard Nature Park sign.
I'll second that.
Okay, can I roll call vote, please?
Sure, just one second. That was, and then SWAC was the second?
Yep.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes. Okay, on to the last one, new business. It's new business, but it's old business, too, because this is about East Street. One of our trustees who will not be named advised me that the bus pickup and drop off point was changing from the parking lot to East Street, and there was a big hole over there where the bus is called.
Oh.
And when I went over there, I looked, sure enough, there's a giant hole. It took every bit of material I had to put a patch in there, and I didn't, I didn't even get half of it.
This is recent?
Yeah, I did that, I did that Labor Day night.
Oh, good for my driveway.
Yeah, Andrew and I were out there Labor Day night paving.
Wow.
Anyway.
Who smokes?
The material I use is the stuff I bought that I can keep in the garage. It comes in bags. And and I bought this last spring when we needed it, and I didn't use all the, what I had left over, I I used there. And I kept one bag back for a hole by John's right, his driveway, and I I needed more. I don't have enough, so. But but the good news is it's holding up, so I'm happy about it. The bad news is when we were shoveling the dirt and crap out of that, out of that big area, we had to shovel all the old gravel and dirt out. Every time I got, you have to have a clean edge, you have to have a hard edge to adhere to. And every time I got up to the edge of this giant, it it just broke down.
Yeah, East Street's.
East Street.
Is it east or is it division?
It's both.
It's both.
Okay.
It's that whole big circle.
Got it, okay.
It we, I can't, I could go in there and and try to crack seal it, but it looked like a noodle when I was done, it's so bad.
Gotcha.
The problem was, is when I started hitting it with the shovel, to see if we could adhere to it, because what we do is take a torch.
Yeah.
We heat that up and then we push, and we heat the material up and push it back and it gets a good seal.
Gotcha.
If not, it's not, it's water permeable, it's just going to fall apart. That's, that was the real bad news about that one. I saw that, I said, oh, I took a big gulp and said, this is not good, because the whole road looks the same. Now, this came up in 2017, when I talked to my predecessor about this. He said, back in 2017, I don't know any, who was on the council then, anybody here?
I think.
Alex?
I think that was him.
It stopped at, it's way too expensive for us to do. I think we, because we were going to tie it in with doing West, East and West Elmwood.
I think at the time when we looked at it, no one had considered adding East and Division Street to Elmwood Project. And then by that time, it would have been its own separate project and we didn't have budget.
Extra funds for that.
Makes sense.
If I remember correctly.
Because the engineering is like usually two years out, so that makes sense.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I put four hundred and fifty pounds of material in there. And it didn't, I would have to put that much again, more, but it's a little, it's like twenty dollars per fifty pounds, it's a little expensive, I don't want to do it. So what I've done now is I've got, I've got that there, I'm just watching it to see how it holds up to this, whether or not I'm going to put any more in there or not. The rest of it, we shoveled the gravel and dirt back in, and it's holding up well. It's holding up very well to the bus traffic, but I'm out there almost every day looking at it in the morning after the bus has come through.
Yeah, if you look kind of where my driveway is, you can see that the edge crumpled out to.
Yes, and Alex did a lot of shoulder work on East Street, but the problem is the pavement's not not appreciating it.
So that's a new bus route, then, because they did not run through there before.
The buses would go into the parking lot.
Yeah.
You had a medium load of cars somewhere I was parking, even though it was pointed out to me that it's illegal because there's no stopping standing signs there, but no one's ever.
No, I didn't, I didn't hear you.
No, I haven't been literate on my street when it comes to those signs.
Yeah.
So, but I think the heavier buses coming through now is actually kind of pushing the asphalt out and it's just continuing to crack anymore. I think the lighter, even more cars.
Yeah.
It didn't push as much, but now the buses coming through, it's starting to.
They're going.
They're going, yeah.
They're coming to my house, up around, dropping out in front of school and out past.
That's bizarre.
And it's bizarre. I wonder why.
It seemed like they had more room in the parking lot over there.
They, so what they're, I think they're trying to do is have all of the cars come in, go loop around all the way through the back of the parking lot and do drop kids in the parking lot. That way they can process the kids out through there faster instead of having, I don't, that's, I can show you the map that they provided to us, but that's.
Amazing.
It's also, you're eventually going to get calls from angry residents about buses blocking driveways.
Yes, I'm sure.
Or going with the fast sign, those, those buses are hauling.
They do haul, yeah.
Admit it.
Okay.
They gotta seem to care about that, eh? Blocking the driveways.
At least not today, not the pictures I have.
Wow.
Those driveways are bus, a bus apart, you know, like one could easily block two.
I wouldn't like it. If you have an emergency, they're sitting there.
You're not getting out, yeah.
You're going to hear events here for a second, but whether it's buses or parents, it doesn't have my driveway blocked almost every day.
Serious?
I'm not surprised.
I'd still go to Brian's Dodge if I could park a new spot.
I've had to take the front bumper of my truck and put it up against almost someone's front fender and lay on the horn for them to even look at me to get out of my driveway.
Hopefully this happens.
So it was, it was not a very.
Oh, I don't come on wood.
Friendly conversation I was having with myself in my driveway.
I don't blame you.
Oh, my. It's rude.
It is.
And and the comments I've received back is, I didn't want someone doing that, I shouldn't have bought outside of school.
And I I guess if you.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess the same could be said if you don't want to, yeah.
No, it's it's upsetting because it doesn't help, right?
No.
When you hear that.
Yeah.
That is the bad news. I don't know what we're going to do about it, because I'm going to tell you, it's going to be more expensive than it was in 2017, that's for sure.
Oh, yeah.
But I'm going to have to do something, unless I'm looking at something to do here going forward, because we're going to need something, and probably sooner than later, probably much sooner than later.
You keep telling me, turn it into dirt, like you said, and grade it.
Yeah.
We've got a grader, right?
Yeah, just have to grade it, yeah. Every day.
With your grader.
It's all good.
Richard did tar and chip and it held up for the, no, Armada did tar and chip and held up fair traffic.
And it, I don't know what that is.
Tar and chip is where they put down a layer of gravel, and they put down a layer of asphalt here and then put asphalt on top of it. So it's kind of mixed between asphalt and gravel, and it's right around the same price as asphalt, maybe a little cheaper, but it's better because you can see it and catch anything that occurs.
Is that the, do you know thirty four, like, once you go past, like, the proving grounds? I know they did something, it didn't look like, at least when I was watching work, it did not look like that normal.
No, I I would recognize it, because that's where I live, but I did see it when I paid there. Yeah, and if they have fair traffic going over, they hold it up, that's good.
Okay, let's move on to old business now, on East Street. Let's move on to the next, twenty, forty two, eighty five, Forest Street update. Good news. Somebody cut the weeds and cut the grass.
I saw that, I was wondering if it was you.
It wasn't me.
I didn't know.
I told you, we can't go under.
Okay, cool.
Unless the lawyer knows we're going, without their permission.
That's fine.
So I don't know who came and did it, all I know is it's done.
I actually was gonna, yeah, I was gonna snap, I did snap a photo of it and wanted to let them know that their marketing of the property is not very good.
Right. So that's all I have on that. Purchase of the road grader update, I'm sorry, I've texted, I've called, I'm not getting an answer. When Judy comes back tomorrow, she knows another person that works up there that we could call and I can get ahold of them tomorrow. So I'm sorry I don't have that tonight, but I'm really only going by the two months we got in August, so we're looking in October for that. I I don't hold out any hope for that. Okay. The next is the DPW update. The one is, is now that Don is officially gone, has retired from service to the village, we need somebody to get in there and and do more of the work than what I'm doing. So I I asked my son about it, I've only asked him about that, this this decision is totally up to him. His only problem is he's not adequate at the truck yet, and he's a little worried about plowing snow in the winter.
Fair enough.
But because he's not done it, he's done like parking lots and stuff, pickup truck, but this is a little bit different than that. So what we can do now, if the council is not opposed to it, is moving him up in a temporary position as supervisor at this point in time. According to the lawyer, legally, we still have to put a hand in the paper and see if somebody wants to hire him as a supervisor.
Fair enough.
We call him a supervisor because he's allowed to spend money for the DPW if he needs to, if he needs material or something, he's he's got, he's got, actually, the DPW supervisor can spend more money than I can.
Is this position local to Leonard only? Is it Leonard residence only?
Yes. No, oh, you mean that?
The the position of supervisor, is this another one where you have to be local?
Well, it's hourly rated, right? And he only works by many, he only gets paid by as many hours he puts in on DPW.
But he doesn't, you, doesn't have to live in the village to.
It's not in the bylaws.
There we go.
I don't think so.
Okay. Got it.
One other.
It's been advantageous in the past.
Absolutely.
That's why we've done it, but I don't know that we're going to be able to do that or, you know.
One other concern I have with the plow truck is I think we need to find someone with a CBL for the plow truck. Because the GVWR is forty thousand pounds.
Where, that truck's twenty five thousand pounds.
The weight of the truck is twenty five thousand pounds.
It's a thousand pounds under the, it's twenty six something, I think, for the, for the.
That GVWR, gross vehicle weight rating, that twenty six thousand one, that twenty six thousand one is for the chauffeur's license. So anything more than twenty six thousand, we need a CBL.
And you're talking when it's loaded?
What's that?
When it's loaded, it has equipment on it?
It's the weight rating of the vehicle.
Oh.
So I think we need to look into it.
Just to make sure we're safe.
Yeah.
What does, what does Andrew Moore do on a normal, on a daily basis? What is his day job?
Self-employed contractor.
Oh, okay, okay. In what?
Propervations, interiors.
Okay.
And he he don't do decks and stuff in the summertime, that's all he can get ahold of.
Got it.
He's doing interior.
Bathrooms, kitchens?
Yeah, yeah, he's got a big one over in, you know, McComb County right now, so he's taking some time to do it.
So his job is normally flexible enough that he doesn't mind doing a snow job, you know, at the two o'clock in the morning?
In the winter.
Oh, this is true, too, yeah. All right, good.
It's not, it's almost like that, he's got more work in the summer than in the winter, unless unless there's a lot of interior work out there. Generally, there isn't. People don't like to do interior work around holidays and stuff for the long time anyway, they want their house ready.
I love it. Really don't, I'm just kidding.
I'm going to refuse myself for this.
Is this, you said to appoint him temporary until, just to fill the position until we actually post, like we're supposed to, and go through the hiring process? He can put in a resume?
Yes, yes, we'll rectify it soon.
And then he would go through the process like everybody else, have a background check, you know, get all of our information that we have on a drug free workplace, equal opportunity, all the same stuff we do for any other new hire, we would do for him and and run him through.
Right now, we just need somebody because you can't handle the load by yourself, and technically, it's not really something you should be doing.
Would free me up to do more of what I'm supposed to be doing rather than paying all my attention to what's going on.
Rather than filling cracks and holes and stuff like that, you know?
Yeah.
Any issues? I will make a motion to allow Andrew Moore to be temporary supervisor in the position until we fill it the proper way, yeah, officially. Let's look. Roll call or no?
Yeah, I, because he gets paid, I suppose we'll do a roll call, yeah.
Roll call, yes.
Okay, are you not going to vote?
No, I don't think I should.
I think you can.
I don't think I should, I don't.
Okay, you don't want to? Okay, then I'm going to put that you abstain.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
And that's okay. SWAC?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I I don't have anything on the MPA report. I, nothing's coming to the village.
No.
CBGT report?
We will have a public hearing next month to give back all of the money that they are launching back, the expired old money that's throwing off our our metric. I think they want us at a one point five performance, and we're at three point five. So.
Do we have a date for the meeting yet, or?
Um.
Do we just make it the same date?
We're just going to do the public hearing with our regular meeting that's on the thirteenth, I think.
October thirteenth.
I think it's October thirteenth is our next meeting.
Yep.
So that's, we'll have a public hearing just to to go through that.
It's a bummer, but I don't think we have a choice.
We do not.
Okay.
Hey, Orange Enforcement, we did send a letter out to one fifteen West Elm Street. He continues to use motorcycles in the motorcycle track he's got in his yard, he's going to start occurring penalty.
It appears to be grassing up pretty well.
So I I haven't heard any noise, so I don't think there's anything going on over there. So he has, he received that letter just the other day, I think, kind of last week we[1526.29] just the other day, I think, kind of last week we got it back, that he got it, so. Summer Festival Committee is, is still on a holding pattern, waiting for the bank to clear out so that they can shut down their, officially shut down their operations. Decorating Committee. In your packet is a decorating committee request, but it says $850 is wrong.
I count it 650.
What this is for is for the fall decorations to delighting ceremony at Christmas time. This should finish out the When I got the text from Yvonne this morning.
Yeah.
She asked for $1,200.
Yeah, they don't need that.
Pardon me?
She's probably looking at other things that are on here then. I do actually see 850 if the tree cannot be donated.
Okay.
But we could probably wait on that tree donation. Most of the time, Royal Roofing does us the honor of supplying a tree, so I'm sure we'll request it again.
There's also a few tree farms around here, you can get like 35 bucks, I'd be happy to go get one.
Especially if they're that cheap. I would personally sponsor it, so.
$850?
No, not for the tree, for the whole event. Yeah, so this is
No, this is, this is for
Actually, it, we'll go with greens for the planters in November. We switch out, we're trying to do it as minimal as possible, so they would just go to greens, that way they're ready for Christmas. That's 250 to fill all the pots. The 200 is the tree, just in case, because we try to get the biggest tree, but assuming it wouldn't be donated. So we could probably hold off on that. And then an outhouse is 250 and then Santa's 150. So that takes us clear until December for decorating. So really 650 would be, the only thing I would say would be requested tonight, not the full.
Okay.
Like you said, we can, we can take a look at trees and if Royal doesn't want to do it, so.
Make a motion to pay the $650 to the decorating committee for all winter decorations and Christmas party.
I will second that.
I have a roll call vote, please?
Mm-hmm. Moore?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Okay, North Oakland Transportation Authority. I got to that meeting late this time around because I was at the meeting here prior to that stuff. But I got in there, it, we have a trolley car that runs between Oxford and Lake Orion. It's the best use of it. It wouldn't be feasible out here. But I don't like it because it's always breaking down. It's 30 years old. And our cargo is human beings.
Yeah, but they're only between the two cities, so I mean
Yeah, but we're repairing it more than we're using it. So to me, being a mechanical guy all my life and yelling at me that I need restoration, I need more than just fixing, not fix me kind of thing. Somebody needs to go in there that knows what they're doing, tear that whole thing apart, get everything up to snuff. Because you can't put a dangerous vehicle on the road.
No, there really should be two of them so that one ones out, it continues running.
So what we're doing, what they're doing is we're gonna finish out the contract on this. We made a deal with Oxford to do this. And we're not gonna renew it. So they're kinda not happy, but, well, if they want to put the money into it, you know, that's one thing, but they don't want to put the money into it. They want us to put the money into it, or Notre to put the money into it. That would, that could take a lot of money to restore that vehicle.
Sure.
That's all I had with that. Planning Commission.
Do we need a meeting?
Well, we're doing ZBA, or Zoning Board of Appeals is meeting. Technically not the Planning Commission, even though all the people on the Planning Commission are the Zoning Board of Appeals.
We do have information for the next meeting to, to have the next meeting.
We do, because we have the variance request, so that's why the zoning board is meeting.
So we will be meeting on 1, 2, 3, September 18th. As regularly, as already scheduled, I guess. So September 18th, 7 o'clock, be here. If you'd like to join us. Other than that, we had an informational meeting the last time, for our previous meeting, we had some information, just kind of a refresher. It's some aspects, more of a we don't go through ordinance changes or zoning changes and all these variance changes. We don't do that often, so we're not versed in how it happens. So we had our assistant, I can't remember, I don't know what her title is.
Oh, consultant planner?
Our consultant planner, come out and just run through the basics with us. Give us a presentation, she and, you know, gave us an electronic version of it so that we can just refresh our memory, you know, refresh ourselves on all this stuff, because we do wear two hats, that's not normal for every city, and needed it, so that's all we did at the last meeting. That's it.
That's it? Okay, Pollyanna Trail Management Council. I spoke a little bit about this when I was talking about the mill that, working in concert with them. They're very interested in what's gonna happen with that mill. I had planned that's difficult, forget, that's about all, really all I have on that thing. Painting, there's more painting to do. We got 250 ton of gravel and still in the parking lot that that I'm hoping they'll continue to use our truck and driver on to dump. Because that goes a long way for paint or dews to be parked behind the seat of the table. So all this helps out, so.
Why, did the tractor ever get fast? From the last time they were loading up the gravel into the trucks?
I didn't know anything happened to it. Nobody told anything, said anything to me.
Oh, okay.
Did the John Deere tractor?
Yeah.
The, oh, alright, I'll tell you. The, the problem with the John Deere tractor is that the weight bucket, the counterbalance bucket in the back is too small for that big of a tractor. What we need to do is, and I'll look and see what it's gonna cost, is we need a bigger weight bucket to make that tractor more stable when you're trying to load a dump or something truck. When you get a full bucket too high up in the air, it becomes unstable. It's, it's a little wonky, so. We generally don't do full buckets when we're loading. We do half buckets and stuff, because that's all you can do. So we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to rectify that. We're gonna keep using it for that kind of thing. Or for anything else, like when we used the cage, when we picked somebody up to do something in high work, I mean, you're high again. The weight isn't, ratio is different, but still it's there. And you have to be awfully careful. Okay, so Village Park. We talked about the sign in Village Park. The back filling and everything I did this summer, it really seems to be working out great. It's settling in real nice. It can hold up. We can cut it now. There is some grass growing through the thing, so we, we're able to, the mower holds up to it. And it dissipates the water quickly through there, which is what I wanted. Really, that's what I was after. The more dissipation of water, because it stops us from going in there and doing any kind of work. For weeks at a time. Okay.
Hold on. Tell Andy to put mowing that herb. Our property, tell him to put mowing.
I did talk, I took him out there and showed him. He did, he didn't go through there. He goes around, he goes around there and goes, he's gotta go between the telephone pole and your property to get into the park.
I understand that.
So when he comes around, so if he swung out too much, he didn't cut part of that grass, you know, I'm sorry about that, but he wasn't intentional.
Well, here's what's gonna happen.
And we talked, I know I got
We're blocking it off. We're putting something up and it better not be taken down. Tell nobody cares about it. Don't leave it alone.
No, I can't stand out there and police it if somebody comes along the trail and does something. I can't do anything about that.
I understand that, and I don't believe it's the trail people doing it.
Okay.
You can take care of it easily. Pay us the money, we're done with it.
I can't, I'm still, still stuck in engineering. I'd call them every week. I can't get it on the engineering. I mean, I can't, if I don't have
Responsible.
If I don't have all the legal stuff done. I really would like to have this done.
I would too.
And I wanted to have it done a while ago. You know I've wanted to have this done all summer and it's just
Well, we're blocking it off.
Is this the junk?
Yeah.
I mean, it's your property.
It's our property. If anything happens, who's responsible? Us.
So we don't have it out of, we, I thought that was like kind of already done. It's not done yet?
No.
Oh, for crying out loud.
No, we paid. We were paid, we paid for it. We don't have the deliverables yet. I keep calling them, I said, we don't have your deliverables.
What are we waiting on?
And they, well, there's somebody else supposed to call me now. And they haven't called me yet, so I gotta do that again tomorrow. I call every week.
What, what are we waiting on though?
Them to get done with the legalese for this, for the property split.
Like the verbiage?
And then it's got, yeah, the verbiage and it's gotta be reviewed. And they've gotta review it and then it's gotta come to me, then I gotta send everything to John to draft the proposal. Then I'll come out here, then Ashley's have to approve the proposal, we have to approve the proposal. We send it back to John and he'll send us the final proposal, the real one. Yeah, you know.
So maybe next year, why can't that?
Oh, oh my gosh. Yeah, I didn't realize how complicated it was.
Okay, anything on community block grants and nothing for everybody?
Uh-uh, nope.
Okay.
So you wanna
Chair this meeting at
8:21.
8:21.
Well, she's got a different. I recognize, I support, yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.